Good morning and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for November the 1st. All of our council are present. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for Monday's council meeting. So, council, please refer to that document.
Mayor, if I—
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Mayor, just an observation. Pastor Frazee at the Gateway Bible Church, his brother died recently and there was a funeral service for him last Saturday. And I was able to attend. I know the family, so just it's kind of interesting. Frazee will be praying for us, Pastor Frazee.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that's a—he's a pillar in our community, so that's a loss and we'll hopefully he'll be here Monday and we can express that in person, but thank you for noting that. Looking at the rest of the agenda, I know we do have some items that are on and off the consent, and I think we've got some that we are—we'll get some staff presentations on. Mr. Brady, I think—or is it—Mr. Smith, are you going to help us with 6N and then some of the insurance issues?
Yes, Mayor, well, we'll give a presentation every—
When we get to 6N, we've got a presentation. Thank you very much. Council, prior to that, any questions on liquor license or bingo applications or purchase contracts?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
On question 5O, I know I brought this up once before about street crimes, but one of the things I want to also look at or have staff start looking at is their opportunity to take our police volunteers that are driving marked police cars, but they're unarmed and untrained on how to interact in the event of a gunfire or a confrontation of such. I think it puts us—it puts a large risk on our volunteers that are sitting in a marked police car for those in our community that may not like the police. And so I would really like to see some of our volunteers that help with our police that are doing more of our traffic control and different things like that can get—maybe get some of these light-duty pickups with maybe a different flashing yellow light or some type of strobe bar on the top instead of driving marked police cars.
Okay. I suspect you'll hear from the police on that. Thank you. Other questions on the agenda? Mr. Brady.
Mayor, can I just—I think it's—sometimes we go through these agendas and a lot of things are happening, but I think it would be—it's good to note, I just—I think a good news that I'd—and I don't—I think I got all of them, but 5C and 5M, N, O, P all have Mesa businesses are involved, and 5W include Mesa businesses that we're doing work with in these items. So, we appreciate the Mesa businesses showing interest in our procurements and being competitive in that. So, I thought that was—it would seem like a good, healthy number in there this time, so.
Mr. Brady, remind us, is when someone is doing business with the city and responding to a contract, is—do we give any type of preference to a Mesa business or is there an extra point you get at the end or?
We are—I think we're—we're very limited in what we can do under the bidding processes, but I do—do we still give credit for the sales tax? Yeah, Matt, why don't you kind of explain that?
Mayor, council members, to your question, we do not give a preference, but we do a consideration for the transaction privilege tax that comes back to the city. So if it's a city vendor or contractor and they remit taxes to the city, we will can—use that as consideration in their evaluated bid price.
Yeah. Great, thank you. That makes mathematical sense, doesn't it?
Right. And then we do a lot of—we try—and Matt and his folks and other departments have been doing a very good job of reaching out to our Mesa businesses so that they're aware of the opportunities, and I think that makes a world of difference also. But it felt like there was just a good representation on this particular agenda, so I wanted to highlight that, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So, Matt, when they—that tax consideration, is that deducted from the bid price? Is that what happens?
Correct. The—once the bid prices come in, we evaluate whether or not tax is applicable to those items, and if it is applicable to those, then we will then use that 1.75% the Mesa transaction privilege tax to then decrement from their bid price to use that as the evaluated price.
And with that, they could become the low bidder that way?
They can.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Other questions on any purchase contracts? A very large purchase contract that we're considering is item 6N having to do with our insurance purchases. Mr. Smith, can you update us on that, please?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
I just want to say something on 6I. I'd just like to thank Nancy Baldwin, the Hickey Foundation, for their longtime support of Mesa and Mesa PD and for their efforts in fighting sex and human trafficking. So, that's $160,000 going towards the overtime for PD is pretty significant, so thank you.
Yes?
With that, you know, that's for minor sex trafficking, and there's some criteria for that, so the police department will meet some of the criteria. I think there's a midpoint and then a final report to give back to the foundation. So, yeah, I appreciate them doing it. That's huge.
Yeah, I know they had a large operation about two months ago. A lot of arrests were made. It's very successful, so that is a great partnership. We appreciate their support. Mr. Smith, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good morning. We're here on 6N. That's the insurance renewal, which we haven't been back to you for a couple of years on, and we have good news for you. On my left is Jason Reed, the Deputy City Attorney over the litigation group, and Lisa Lortz, the Risk Manager for the city. And so we're going to go through a number of—the number of the insurances with the We have—we have a little—the first slide is the history of the trust fund. It was created in 1977. We got some basic stats there as far as the claims and lawsuits and the types of insurance that we're going to discuss. The first insurance is the liability insurance. This is the biggest policy that the city carries, and as you can see, I won't read the chart. It's been—it's been fairly flat here in the last couple of years. I will talk about the middle column there, which is self-insured retention or SAR. That's akin to a deductible that most people are familiar with within their insurance. Our deductible or our SAR is $3 million, as you can see in that chart. This is really—a—this is a great news. The insurance that we got bid was incredibly flat over the last three years, and there's a number of reasons for that. But our last—in our last bid, the increase—the delta—the difference between that bid and the next bidder was $230,000, and that was for actually less coverage. Or let me state it another way. We're getting $50 million worth of liability insurance for less money than the next bid, which was for $10 million. So this was—this was incredible news. This is not like auto insurance. It's not—you know, it's not driven by so many numbers. It is driven more by personal relationships as far as them actually getting to know our department and the city. And in fact, Travelers, who is the largest municipal liability insurer, is the carrier on this and has been for the last three years. They've come into our office, they've audited our office, and in the last couple of months even came in and gave a presentation to the police department. And I want to thank Chief Batista and the command staff. About 150 of the command staff went to that presentation. It was two separate presentations over one day. We got the bid two weeks after that presentation. And so this—this—this number on the far right on the chart, which is really sort of a flat number, is a great number because this is an industry in which a number of the carriers are going out of—the are no longer carrying this coverage. And so it's a—it's a limited market and it's becoming very competitive, so for that number to stay at that rate is really incredible news. I won't read the chart. We'll go on to the property insurance that the city has. You also see on property insurance also on the chart, which I won't read to you, you can look at, is also a flat number, but let me share this—this number with you that that's not on the chart. The city over the last four years has recovered more than $1 million in both its property and aviation insurance. And so this insurance is not just something that we pay out. We actually recover some of this money and so on. On property damage, it was over $500,000. On the aviation, because of the loss of the helicopter a couple of years ago, we got several hundred thousand dollars. Combined, we've gotten over $1 million in the last four years. So this is not just money that's going out of the city. This is real insurance that we make claims on and we get paid back. Cyber risk insurance, you know, interesting. Almost all these other policies have existed, you know, at least in the industry for more than 100 years. Cyber risk is—in the industry is a new insurance. It's become a necessary insurance. You'll see some initial volatility within the first years on that chart because of it's a new insurance. It's stabilized, and we're seeing that stabilize. This is, as the name implies, is the type of insurance that you've seen other entities, which they've had to make claims on as far as credit monitoring or credit loss or damages that they have from intrusions onto their system. And so we've carried this policy for a number of years, and we've obviously done so again. And again, it's a—become a flat number as the—as this market sort of stabilizes.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question on that? Because this is an interesting new topic, isn't it? But I guess the liability here would be that we have a lot of our residents' information. A lot of them pay online, their utility bills and so on, and so we've got bank account and passwords and protected information, and obviously there are bad people in the world that would love to break into that and get that information, and they are—we read stories every day of them being successful in attacking organizations like ours in that scenario. What are our potential damages in that scenario? Let's say someone is successful in that situation I described earlier, and—and they are able to steal from us sensitive information about our customers. What should we expect to be responsible—be held responsible for in that situation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, it's a great question, and I'll answer it in a couple of ways. One is, is there's there's both—you're familiar with this first-party and third-party type of claims. One is the first-party in the insurance context is when you're damaged and you're able to get paid for that. You usually see that in a property context. And then there's third-party, in which a third-party is damaged, and then they are seeking compensation from you, and you have insurance to cover that. The scenario you're talking about is a third-party type of claim, and we've seen some other—in fact, it was governmental institutions within Arizona, which they did have some of that information stolen from them, and then they had to pay for their insurance. I believe they did have insurance paid for credit monitoring and other damages that those individuals suffered from that incident, and that's exactly this type of policy. It does have both first-party and third-party type of coverage, and so it does cover those type of sensitive information that which if it gets out there, it can damage somebody as far as credit card loss. But it also has first-party type of claims in which you—in which we actually have damage to our system itself, and so that also has first-party coverage.
But the reason I ask is I'm just wondering, is $10 million enough coverage?
So, we've asked that question too, and just so you know, the common number is 5 and 10, and so we actually went with the higher number a number of years ago, and we actually talked again with our broker about that, and 10 is still—we're—they assured us that they—they felt that that was an appropriate number. In fact, we talk about the sort of appropriateness of the numbers with our broker every year, but that one we specifically again went back on and asked about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Luna.
And I think what you're referring to is the Maricopa County College District was—they penetrated there and stole a lot of information. So, as far as you're concerned, we're secure, and we haven't had any issues related to any cyber attacks or trying to steal information?
Well, I—
No, there's been attempts.
There's been attempts.
There's been multiple attempts. We've not—I—we've not—
He's not had to make the claim.
Okay, good. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Yeah, okay.
Worst-case, you know, doomsday scenario, somebody comes in and is extremely successful, and we have to pay security monitoring and, you know, do—respond appropriately to our customers, and it costs more than $10 million. Is—do we have any other type of umbrella coverage that would come in and pick up the excess, or would that—that's just the risk that we're bearing is we'll get the first $10 million after our deductible covered, and then we'll just—we'll come out of pocket with whatever we need to after that?
Mayor and Council, so I don't want to lock us in because we very well might go back to our insurer and argue that our umbrella policy should cover us, so I don't want to say that we don't. I'll say generally on the policies, once you get past the cap, we're back to looking at the trust fund.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't include the chart for the airport aircraft insurance. It's in the council report. The chart is simply too big, too complex. It's a—it's a very unique type of—unique type of policies. A number of the policies are called Dollar One policies, so you'll see the deductible is actually zero. That is what the industry has, and so if you're looking at the chart, that's not a mistake. That's just the very nature of all those policies. The chart simply is too complex. The rates were also similar, flat, which is very good for us because actually this is part of the industry that's actually not within the city of Mesa, but as an industry whole has had a lot of losses. So we were very pleased to get a very modest increase in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Jim, I had a question about the FAA in terms of—I'm thinking of Falcon Field Airport. So if they're liable for a—an airplane crash, where does the city and the government —and the US government, where does that fall in terms of ensuring that we're protected as a city entity, as an airport?
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, and I don't want to use a particular scenario, but whenever there's potential joint liability, the plaintiffs will sue both entities, and so we're in a number of lawsuits in which we're named and another entity isn't named, and sometimes it involves another governmental entity. And so depending on the situation and percentage of fault, Arizona's a true-fault concept within Arizona, which means you apportion fault based off the actual negligence. And so in that lawsuit and in those insurance carriers are going to look at whose whose fault it is and at what percentage is, and then they'll work it out from there. And so you end up in a situation sometimes in which you're working with your co-defendant and defending the case, but to be honest, sometimes you end up in a situation where you, as a co-defendant, are also looking at the other co-defendant as a more responsible, and you try to avoid pointing the fingers at each other, but sometimes that does happen.
And Jim, so are we talking exclusively about Falcon Field and as far as the insurance? Are we talking about Phoenix Mesa Gateway as well, or both?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, this—this is Falcon Field. Gateway is a separate legal entity, and so they pull their own—their own insurance. This—this is just a graphic representation of all the—all the premiums in total, and you can really see how it's—it's been relatively flat. I will say you'll see one dip there. I'll say in the past, there were—there were a few carriers that came in for one year, and they were—they were—they were interested in getting into the market, in the liability market, and we got some good rates. And so we got one year of good rates, and then they left the market and actually never came back. And so we actually have a few dips. If you spread that out over a 10-year period, you'll see a couple dips, and the dips were carriers that tested the waters once and never came back. And so we've been pleased to go with Travelers because we've been able to see a consistent rate over time, and they've stayed in the market too. And then I think we have the—the chart, which shows you all—it shows the—the first three are all of the liability. It's actually in three carriers because you have different layers, and so the first layer is Travelers, and that's what we were discussing, but all three layers there, that was the total that we were talking about, the $635,000. That's the $50 million that sits on top of the $3 million SAR, and then you can see all the other ones. I won't go through the chart. This is also in the council report. But that number at the bottom is less than a 2% increase. It's, I think, a $23,000 increase over last year. It's an incredible number for us to have such a small increase year over year. So this is, you know, it's great news. We're thrilled. And I think the last slide—I can—I can remember when I came here, it was three years ago, we talked about this concept, and the—the concept was this, is we were seeing volatility in the market, and—and going out every year into the market was creating more volatility in our rates, and we wanted to be able to have some—some way to try to keep less volatility. And it's in part because the nature of this insurance—the nature is, is that it's for one year. You can't enter into a three-year contract or a five-year contract, the similar you see in some of your other agenda items. So we did three years ago, is we came to council with a resolution to authorize us to enter into the insurance with the ability to renew so long its increase was 2.5% or less. That worked in our favor for the last several years. In fact, I wish at that time I had come to you with that resolution with five years written on that resolution. We'd never done it before, so we did three years. We're coming with that resolution this time with five years with the hope, the optimism, that we'll be able to keep those rates within 2.5% each year on year-over-year. And so that's the resolution that's before you for Monday. And I think that's our last slide, if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. This is very, very good news. I mean, if—if we are able to stay within that 2.5% increase, that's essentially inflation. I mean, it's—it's almost a static premium, so that's impressive. Mr. Luna.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for—for that presentation. I remember three years ago when you came to us, and you were really concerned about the Traveler insurance, about—because there—the volatility in the market and the potential of not being to get coverage, and I'm glad things have gone in the positive direction. So I think going the five years is a—it's a good move, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Yeah, three years ago, we were—you know, there wasn't—we weren't even getting multiple bids or even interest because the market at that time was—there was a lot of volatility. And Travelers has become so competitive on their rates that, like I said, the next closest rate was over $200,000 higher. So thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Well, you bet. And again, I think this is a reflection of the good work that's done in our risk management. So, Mr. Smith and Mr. Brady, thank you for doing a good job. Proceeding along with the agenda for Monday's meeting, I think we're up to Agenda Item 7. I know there are—it's probably worth noting that there is a—we're introducing Item 7B, which is, I know, a zoning case, a youth permit, that there is some disagreement over, and I—it's just—but this is just introducing the ordinance. Mr. Freeman, do you think we ought to leave it off the consent agenda for introduction, or how would you like to proceed with that?
Yeah, we—we need it off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we need—it—we've got people who'd like to speak on the—
Okay.
—proposal.
All right, so let's take 7B off of the consent, and I—I do understand it's just the introduction, but we expect there'll be people there to talk. Yes, Mr. Luna.
And I know that RJ is here. We are going to have a meeting over at Sahara Elementary School to speak to some of the residents in that area relative to the lighting studies, so we are proceeding. So I think this is a good move on their part to extend it so that we can do a good job and complete that study and move forward.
Okay, so that's both—that's Item 7A.
7A, right.
So would you like to keep that on consent as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. So 7A stays on, 7B comes off. Proceeding through the rest of the agenda, any—we do—I can only just introduce in some zoning ordinances and an annexation case. Agenda Item 11 is off the consent, a zoning case. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I'd ask for 11A to be removed and put on—removed from consent. You know, as we started looking at the—at the general plan, the vision for land use, especially along Crisman Road, was really meant for employment and—with our—our goal of attracting jobs. And my concern is that there's already two of these types of facilities north of the freeway, north of the US 60, and so there's becoming an oversaturation of this continuum care assisted living facilities that are congregating in one area. And so I would—you know, I'd be willing to work with the applicant and with our economic development folks to find a suitable location if they want to be in District 6, but arterial roadways, where we're really trying to draw the high-intensity employment and the high-wage jobs, is not, in my—in my opinion, one of the best uses for this site. So therefore, I pulled it off the consent, and I'll be voting no on question 11A.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that? All right, and quick, council, any additional questions regarding the agenda for Monday? If not, the next item on our agenda is Item 2A. That's to hear a presentation and discuss the council's strategic priority for placemaking, including projects, statistics, and key performance indicators. Candace, welcome back.
Would you like to listen to the—
Let's do it right at the end under announcements. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow, we've assembled an all-star team here.
We have.
Welcome.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So this morning, we have the third council priority that we're coming to you with. So just as a reminder, these were the council priorities that were identified previously. We're kind of going through and creating these pages out on the—the new open data portal, and so we're creating these pages, which allow us, again, to tell our story along with our data. So rather than just putting up graphs and charts and having people interpret those, we're actually able to write a story around that, kind of tell what's going on here in the city of Mesa. So with me today, I have Rob Schultz from Arts and Culture, Heather Wolf from Library, and Mark Hirschberg from Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, and they'll be kind of going over their sections because placemaking is not just one department. It is a citywide and a community-wide endeavor, and we're going to kind of walk through that and show you what we have so far out on our page. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Rob and let him do some—talk about the placemaking for Arts and Culture.
Great, thank you, Candace. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I wanted to mention, first of all, the Arts and Culture Department's comprised of the Mesa Art Center, the IDEA Museum, and the Arizona Museum of Natural History. And as you can see from your document, what we track probably first and foremost is participation numbers in all three of those institutions and the programs that we operate within those institutions. We think that's vitally important and certainly reflects not only on the institutions themselves, but as you know, the vast majority of those people come to downtown Mesa, and we hope that our programs and the attendance generates ancillary spending in the community to benefit everyone through sales tax revenues and other types of spending. I should mention that with the Mesa Art Center and—in particular, in the Arts and Culture Department specifically, we not only operate the institutions themselves as places for people to gather, but we also do a number of community-oriented projects like the Mesa Prototyping Festival, Hello Lamp Post that we did a while ago, the Fantastic Planet Inflatable Sculptures Downtown in May, Musical Shadows. There's a number of other initiatives that we do to make downtown Mesa a more livable space and something that—that helps attract more people downtown. In the Mesa Art Center, in particular, the Performing Live Series is something we wanted to highlight. That's certainly the—the flagship program of the Mesa Art Center itself, with our theater operations bringing in, you know, close to 80,000 people on average each year for all their various performances. The IDEA Museum, we wanted to highlight the fact that they conducted a major overhaul of their programming and their identity about four years ago now, and prior to that, their attendance annually averaged about 65,000 people, and now, after the rebranding effort, the attendance is about just over 100,000 people on average. So naturally, that was very successful. And again, it's—it's about participation and about bringing people downtown to these institutions. Lastly, with the Arizona Museum of Natural History, we wanted to highlight Mesa Grande Cultural Park, which in itself is a gem in northwest Mesa and a place that—that certainly predates the idea of placemaking. People have been coming to that site for a long time. It was—it was hidden in a neighborhood before it was fully developed, and I think it serves as a wonderful link to the Mesa's past as a—as a city-funded and city-operated facility. So we wanted to highlight what's going on there. Over 5,000 people came a year ago, so the—the numbers have gone up since they opened. We're very happy about that. I think that's it for me, unless there's any questions.
I have a quick question, Candace. Are all of the things we're talking about, are they on a specific placemaking location?
You're looking at it right now.
Mayor, yes, yes, they are. So I'm actually out live on Mesa's website right now, and so the what's in there is actually a link, and so if you go, they're actually from our—our homepage.
Okay. I'm—I'm on the homepage, and I see at the top there's banners, home, about us, resident, city hall, things to do, business.
Correct, so if you go—oh, I went back to my home.
Go to—hold on.
I think I have to go to Mesa AZ.
Do you see the open data portal, Mayor? Well, I—I just—
It'll say, "City Council Strategic Plan," right under—if you look on the left-hand side, it'll say, under City Council, it'll say Mesa Strategic Plan. Mesa AZ. Black dot. Yes, at the bottom.
Do you—
All right, so if you go into here and you go into city hall—
Wait, wait, no, no, hold on. Go back, go back. Don't—don't do it that way. Go through the—the buttons on the front. Because go—go to the—no, there's a button.
Multiple access points. Okay.
I just landed on the Mesa AZ homepage.
Yeah. So if we start here, which is where most people come in, you go into city hall?
Wait, Candace.
Mesa's Strategic Plan is right here.
Don't do it—that way. Don't do it that way, because that's not how most people are going to see it. That's—that's insider baseball. Scroll down.
There you go.
There you go. See now, you see that button, Mayor?
Which—
Right there, it says, "Public Records and Open Data."
Yes.
Hit that.
I got, okay. So this gets to our—our open data—
Right. And then—and then you'll see now, "Data Portal." We can probably clean this page up so it looks a little more user-friendly.
Well, I—I think that is kind of a more wonkish way to get here, right?
Right there, it says, public records and open data.
Yes.
Hit that.
I got, okay. So, this gets to our, our open data program.
Right, and then, and then you'll see now, data portal. We can probably clean this page up so it looks a little more user-friendly.
Well, I think that is kind of a more wonkish way to get here, right? Because who, the people that are going to click public records and open data are probably nerds looking for data, right? But if I want to know about placemaking.
Well, but see, placemaking is a, is a subsection of strategic priorities. So, we've got to get, really, it's strategic priorities.
Yeah.
And see, maybe that's the key word we can put on the front end.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm saying this is fabulous, but I think it might, we need to make a big banner on when you land.
Maybe public records, instead of saying, we could put something that says strategic priorities.
Put a different title on there.
Well, I, what's great is when you do land here, one of the first things you can do is press things to do. Right, so when I press things to do, I can get to the IDEA Museum, Arizona Museum of Natural History, all the things you're talking about, but I'm getting there through a different door than, than this door.
Yeah, if people were coming in and they weren't, they weren't scrolling down and they were looking at City Hall thinking it was, you know, what do I know, we need to know about City Hall, and what do I want to know about the City Council's strategic priority? If they do come into the City Hall section, you can see over here where it has the Mayor and Council on the left-hand side, talks about the meetings for these types of meetings. And it says, Mayor and Council Strategic Plan. So, if that's where you wanting to go, that's the, that's a one, that's a one-click. If you know to go there, we can continue to work on what makes sense when people are coming in and looking for this. That would bring you to the priorities this way. And so, these are the ones that we've reviewed with you before. We have come in and we've done community safety quite a few, quite a few months ago, which has really two sections, the police side and kind of the law, the fire medical side. And then, we also came and reviewed our transforming neighborhoods, which was number two area. Today, we're talking about placemaking, so you just click on this. Yet to come, which will be in the next couple of months, we'll be coming back with our skilled and talented workforce and also sustainable economy. So, when it comes to the strategic plan or the priorities for the City Council, they are all in one spot. It looks like maybe we need a better way to get there, but they're kind of in one spot here.
Well, I didn't say that to be critical, because I, but my point is, I think you can get here multiple ways, which is probably the right, the right answer. But maybe one of these big buttons as you scroll in ought to be, if I look closely, you know, I get to things to do, but.
So, maybe on that front page, we'll have a strategic priorities button, and then it'll go right to this, this where you are right now, where she is right now.
Yeah. And I think there's a lot of people, though, that, like people from out of town, they know they're going to be in Mesa, Arizona, they might have a few hours to kill.
Well, yeah, that's a separate issue, yeah.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Quite all right. And then, you would just click on this, which I already have open, so I'll open it up over here. And then, you would come into placemaking. And so, it kind of gives the overview of what, the definition that we're using for placemaking, and so, therefore, how we've kind of put that story together based on our definition, which is what we received from Council. And so, if there's no more questions on, and then I should just, also just to remind everyone that it is, the graphs are interactive, they are also live. So, as the data on the backend is updated, so these are not static, these are hooked to data sets in our open data portal. So, if you had here, so this is view source data, that would actually take you to our open data portal to see the actual, the, the source data behind what was making this graph. It's also, most of them are all interactive. If you only want to look at one particular year, fiscal year, you can look at one particular year. If you only wanted to look at fiscal year 19, you just come in and it would refresh the graph. So, these are not static tables, they are interactive on all of our graphs and our, and our charts. I think we'll head it over to Heather with Library Services.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As you know, a major reason for our community to visit the library is for our programs. And so, the charts that we have on the placemaking page show library program attendance, and we have lots of ways for people to sort and filter the information. They can do it by year, they can do it by library branch, age group, and even by program type. So, today, I'm going to highlight early childhood literacy programs, which are the programs geared to children ages zero to five and their caregivers. In fiscal year 2017, 2018, program attendance at early childhood literacy programs increased by 19% over the previous fiscal year. And we use the data, we hope people look at the data, but we use the data. And we feel that that increase is the result of the library reallocating some positions, and we increased our children's services librarians from five to seven across the system. And we did that to focus on early childhood literacy and specifically offer more programs for children ages zero to five, because we felt there was a community demand for that. And the reason we felt there was a community demand for that is because of what was happening specifically at the Dobson Ranch location. So, you can see a chart on the page that's just Dobson Ranch Children Programs. That one is not interactive. So, in January 2016, we hired a children's librarian for Dobson instead of having one librarian who did programming for all ages. Since then, the community has come to love Ms. Stephanie and her programs, and you can see that very much reflected in the chart. Looking at our second chart, you can see a breakdown of children's program attendance by type of program. Because our focus on early childhood literacy, we committed to offering baby lap sit, toddler time, and storytime weekly. We offered every week at the three larger branches, except for the last week of December. So, those programs are held every single week at every single location. At Dobson, these core programs account for 71% of our children's programming, and attendance at baby lap sit, toddler time, and storytime specifically grew by 65%, or 3,000 kids. So, we had a huge uptick in our attendance there. And it's really because our community became to expect that they were going to have fun, high-quality programs if they came to the library. And so, do you have any questions?
Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Heather. I was wondering if I could get the Red Mountain chart as well? I was there, when was I there? Tuesday. And I was with the young toddlers. It was packed in there. So, we know that our libraries are, are getting heavily used and, and appreciate the, the work of your staff and working with the young parents and, of course, the children to get them excited about reading and literacy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yes, you can sort on those charts, and you can select Red Mountain.
So, she just did it. So, yeah, so there it is.
There you go, interactive. You ask and we do.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The first thing you'll see when you get to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities section of the placemaking is our Park Finder application, where we've worked with the IT Department to map all the facilities and try to add as all the amenities that are located at each site, so people can search by address, they can search by amenity type, and, and find the location closest to them or a park or, or facility that interests them. As far as the metrics go, the first one I want to point out is that, that the dip in the recreation and aquatics attendance that happened in 2018, so if you flashback to May, that was a atypical year for us, especially at the end of the year, when a, programs that rely heavily on school facilities and with the teacher walkout at, right at the end of the school year, had a major effect on planning and programming of Mesa Public Schools and Gilbert Public Schools sites, on how they were going to do their construction activities. There was the discussion about extending classes for students, and then, whilst classes got out on time, staff time was extended for staff that worked in the schools. So, parents, another large employer in the state, couldn't get their children to certain programs because they had to extend their working schedule that first week of swim lessons and summer camps. And then, the summer camps' locations were shifted or shortened because of that delay. MPS had to change their construction schedule on several locations to move that. So, what that's counting is actual total visits. So, if it's a swim lesson, that meets two weeks, four times a week, it's counting one person eight times, so it's counting total visits. So, the actual number of reduction of participants was about 520. And again, that was that last week of May, that first week of June where we saw it, and then things remained steady and consistent throughout the rest of the summer. Dobson Ranch continues to be consistent in the rounds played throughout the seasonality that you see there. Obviously, when it's cooler out, the, the rounds increase and, and the visitors are here. And then, when it's warm out in the summer, those go down. But again, continues to remain consistent, we believe, and we hear from the golf course visitors and users, that's the playability and the conditions of the golf course, which we continue to take great pride in.
Mark, why don't you just briefly tell Council about going forward Dobson Ranch, what we have, what we're working on right now?
Okay. So, we have been in a, under contract with the MJ Golf, who's been our concession, concessionaire out there for about 10 years now. We're at the end of the contract of that cycle. So, we've been working with the purchasing department and, and the city manager's office trying to figure out the best locations, along with Councilmember Heredia. And we've decided the best way to approach moving forward is following the model of some of our other sister communities in, in the golf industry and looking for someone, soliciting an RFP for full-service operations from the maintenance sides to the food and beverage side, pro shop lessons, and being a full-service partner with us. What we're hoping through that is there's an opportunity to work with a partner to come in and make some much-needed capital investment that otherwise wouldn't be realized through the current relationship that's set up, and to continue to make that a premier golf facility throughout the valley. So, we anticipate that being available for vent, interested vendors to bid on, it'll be out on, hopefully released by the end of next week. And then, we'll have a, go through that process, and we'll share you, with you the results and updates and our recommendations as we review those.
Mr. Thompson?
Mark, how does, how does the golf rounds per month at Dobson stack up against something like a Los Angeles golf course or one of the, a private facility? How do we compare to, to something like that?
Mayor, Councilmember, again, we're talking two different apples to oranges kind of comparison with the private country club environment and where a membership is required in a lot of those cases versus the municipal course that you can walk on, especially in, depending on the seasonality, at a much lower rate. From other municipal courses, though, I can tell you that our rounds are much higher than those. From a lower-end country club-type experience, private course, we're also much higher than some of those areas as well.
Well, their model typically is not, they limit rounds. A lot of the private come.
Right, well, I'm trying to get to is like, what's Bob McNichols' golf course?
Longbow.
Longbow. So, longbow is, it's a private, but it's not a country club, right? So, anybody can play, it just has a cost to play. How do we stack up against something like that? Because at the end of the day, golf is golf, whether it's a public facility or a private facility, and really, it comes down to the experience and the cost. And so, how do we compare with longbow?
And Councilmember, Mayor, I don't have those numbers specifically. Mike could ask our staff to go back and look at those and see if we can get that information from Bob and some of those other operators and get that to you.
Yes, Mr. Luna?
Mark, you still have a lot of the Mesa, the school district's participation there at Dobson Ranch as well, right? Is that, does that explain some of the uptick in usage?
Correct, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Most of that, they use driving range and, and the practice areas mostly. So, yes, those numbers are included in there as well. But those numbers, again, continue to remain consistent. That usage hasn't changed much over the years. But those are included in there, sir.
When Riverview Golf Course went out, Mark, was there an uptick in rounds played at Dobson?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, we did see a lot of.
Do you have a percentage with that, or?
We'd have, I'd have to go back and compare those records. I don't have those off the top of my head, but I can, we can go back and show you what that change was from year to year.
Well, I guess my point is, is hopefully it increases our revenue stream for that golf course.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, Councilmember, it did increase. Just, and there was also a fee difference, too, between Riverview and Dobson, too, so that.
I've heard that, too. People prefer Riverview because they're lower.
And it was only, it was a nine-hole. We discounted just a little bit, so.
And then, finally, the last one is permitted usage. This is all permit, usage of all permitted facilities, from fields to Ramadas to gymnasiums and classrooms, open space, et cetera. Within there, there is a slight reduction, but again, as I, if you'll recall, when we talked about our budget and going through those performance measures before on field rentals, that slight dip is a change in the way we've allocated fields with the school district. Previously, the city, if you'll recall, scheduled all fields with lights, and then, working with the school district, they asked for control of those lighted fields and are scheduling directly. So, we're no longer counting the reservations that occur on those fields.
So, Mark, I, also during portion of this, Pioneer Park had a fence around it, couldn't be scheduled. I tried to schedule a Ramada at Pioneer Park shortly after it opened and was really impressed that a lot of those Ramadas were booking months in advance. And I know that, you've talked to us in the past about the under, lack of supply and the high demand for lighted athletic fields for youth sports groups. And I know we've got an election next week that's aimed at addressing that. But are there, do we have any facilities in the city of Mesa that are not being booked at capacity between Ramadas or sports fields or, because to me, it seems like everything we have, you know, there's, if you want to use it, I hope you're, you're, you plan in advance because you're going to have to wait a little while because you ain't got to get in line to use it. Is that generally true, or is there something that we're doing that the people can walk up and use without waiting?
Mayor, we, for that very reason, we don't make everything reservable. So, some things are available for people just to walk up and, and use and, and go to that location. And many of those facilities are, there's a fluctuality between seasons during the, you know, on Easter Sunday, for example, there is nothing available. And we have people calling a year in advance, you know, they'll have their pick, family reunion or picnic on Easter Sunday, they'll call the next Monday and be like, hey, can I get it for next year or two? And so, those, that's the busiest day by far. But what we try to do is with every new facility that we're remodeling or, or that's new and going into a neighborhood, we try to work with that community and say, what's going to work best for you as neighbors? Do you need large Ramadas? That was one of the main selling points of Pioneer, for example, was to continue to have the large Ramadas that hold 100 people or more. In other communities, I think back at Desert, Desert Arroyo, when working with the Vice Mayor, it was, no, make them small as possible because we don't want large crowds here because this is the desert environment. So, we're really trying to work with the community to make each of those sites unique to, to try and meet the needs of the community. So, there is no doubt, as our maintenance staff will tell you, that our facilities are all loved. Some of them are overly loved, which make it a challenge. But that's a good thing. That's exactly what we want, is people out being active and utilizing those facilities. If we weren't having to do maintenance and repair on those items, that would tell us a whole different story that we wouldn't want, is that we don't have an active community and we aren't engaging with them. So, I think that's, the telltale sign is when we have to replace playground equipment sooner than it is because it's being overly used, that's a sign that we've, we've hit the mark right and people love that location.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the goal of all of these facilities ought to be to wear them out. I mean, because if people are using them, we're getting our money's worth out of them, right? So, that's great. And, and this is great, I bet, I just, my, my non-critical suggestions would be, I would love, you know, because there is such a demand for these facilities, like the Ramadas and all the things that you do, it'd be nice to have a, a big button as soon as I get onto the Mesa website to say, here's what you can do, and here's the options of things, you know, if you have, if you were looking for a family event, if you're looking for a group event. I mean, we have so many facilities, and it would be nice to have a, a place to go to say, I, I'm going to have a picnic for my class reunion or my family reunion. And I'm, I'm sure when, when somebody contacts you and asks for that, they say, you say, sorry, Pioneer Park's booked, but I can get you in at Riverview Park or this or that. I'm sure that happens, but.
So, Mayor, the Mesa Now app, which is probably how most people would probably access that, will allow you to see a lot of those features.
Okay.
And Mayor, Mr. Brady, one of the things we're also working on is through our registration reservation software, is to allow people to make those Ramada reservations online directly, too, so they don't even have to call staff eventually. They'll be able to sort those Ramadas by capacity, by location, and then book them directly online.
Yeah, well, this is great, but I'd like, I, maybe back at the landing page, under the Things to Do button, I could see it could be a little more user-friendly where we say, here's some suggestions, and if you want to, do you want to rent a facility? We push a button, and here's the 30-place, or do you, do you need an athletic field for your youth sports team? Push a button, and here's the choices. And I'm, I'm sure that's available, but it just seems to me like it's a little more difficult to find for people like me who maybe aren't, are generationally challenged in negotiating websites. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Please proceed.
So, going over, so what, as you're asking about, and you're asking about assets that we have in the city and what is there is to do, but we also have on here, because other places are not one-stop, right? That they're actually continuous, which is our multi-use facilities, which are our. They're actually continuous, which is our multi-use facilities, which are our multi-use paths, right? And so, what we've included here is actually all of the various multi-use paths across the city of Mesa. And depending on, it doesn't matter who owns them or what types. You can go and say, looking for bike lanes, bike routes, canal paths, multi-use paths, or the two-way cycle tracks that, cycle tracks that we've just been putting in recently, whether it's lit or not lit, the type of surfaces that are out there. So, someone who's coming in and wanted to, not familiar with the area, wants to take their bike out and doesn't want to be on the roads, wants to be on the paths or on, you know, which roads have designated bike lanes, this would also be available out here to kind of show how we have this kind of a matrix across the city regardless of also who the owner is. So, regardless of who the owner is, we're actually able, these are available to our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Candace. You know, I've had a lot of people ask me when I step out in the bike paths, how can I access this faster, the bike lanes? Is this, and I haven't done it, but is this kind of like one button that you can push or two buttons to get into this app to find out the bike lanes and the multi-use paths? Or do I have to go through all like the beginning, like the mayor was doing and?
Yeah. Remember, we're in strategic priorities.
Right.
So, there's, when you go back out to the beginning, if your intention is not necessarily looking at performance, it's strategic priorities, but to look for those, there's other ways, there would be a much more efficient way to get to this.
Okay.
Yeah. This page, this page is meant for the council priority to show how we are progressing or to try to measure how we're progressing on trying to meet those objectives. And so, this is kind of putting it all together, which does kick you a couple clicks to get to this because it is strategic priority, which is different than what I think what's been alluded to on things to do. So, on the things to do, or you want this, this would be more of an app-type of thing that you'd want for something like this, where you can have it on your phone and say, I'm looking for a bike lane and we want to be able to pull it up and look for an app. Where we have, this particular page is not meant for that. So, this particular page is really meant for more of a reporting of how we're progressing on placemaking itself. Like, how, how are we doing? Are we creating more places for people to go, for people to utilize? How are we doing as a city on doing that? But yes, but all this information, again, the, the goal of this and then really the goal of data, and I won't just call it open data, it's data, right? It's using data. And this is a great example of collecting, filtering, making sure it's quality data, and then be able to use it. And so, once we have that data available, we can use it here to report to you how we're progressing on creating places. And we can also use it in apps where people can look it up and actually filter, I'm looking for a bike lane, I'm looking for only paved, not unpaved, I want lit, not lit. And so, that's just, that's the power of data, right? Which is what is so great about it, is we can use it for reporting, but we can use it for actual daily interactions with our community. And then going from there, well, we've also included in placemaking, because again, placemaking is, is we've talked about, we've talked about facilities that are owned by the city. We've talked about connections and paths and recreation areas. But we also have economic centers and those are placemaking areas as well. And so, we wanted to include that on this page. And so, we've really have kind of a little bit about of the, each of the main areas that have been focused on by the city council for your economic centers. And what they do is they kind of link out to more data on, their economic development department has set up pages specifically for these areas. And so, this is really just kind of a summary with the links out to those particular pages that gives you more information that anybody can go to, to see if they want to invest or develop within these areas or how it's going in these areas. So, we have downtown Mesa as one of the areas, our Falcon District, Fiesta District, and then our Mesa Gateway District. And so, those are kind of, sorry, and then one more, Mesa Riverview. And so, as they develop more information about this, the pages that link from here will give that more information. I can pull up the downtown Mesa real quick and you can kind of take a look at that. And so, you can come in here and here's the landing page for the downtown Mesa area. And so, it tells if someone wants to talk about that, there's contact information, additional resources, what's going on, what do we have, what are our amenities in this particular area, in the downtown area, you know, what's going on. And so, we wanted to put this all, that's why it's on the placemaking page, because these are place, these are still places, these are economic centers in the city. So, the placemaking kind of gives you, page gives you that one-stop of all the various types of places that are either existing, being developed, being considered, how are we growing and how are we measuring? And then we're kind of giving you those links into, if you want more information, here's a page that has like all of the information in this particular area. And with that, if there's any questions? And we've got some other links and so forth, historic properties, city maps, those types of things. Again, this is, this is not a one-time thing. This is just the unveiling, if you will, of this page. These pages are meant to be live, meant to be growing and evolving as we, as we are looking at different things to measure or different things that we want to report on or what's going on. And they're meant to be evolving and living stories about what's going on in the city of Mesa.
Thank you. I think that, thank you for doing this. I know this has been a priority that we've talked about for the last couple of years and it's, it's fun to see it happening. So, thank you for the hard work to do this. I think you can tell though by bringing these things up, we have a lot to say about this because I think the community is anxious to, through the internet, to get access to information about all the cool stuff that our city government is doing. So, and I, I know we have talked also about apps and maybe having a, an easy way to get, rather than negotiating the city website, a quick and easy way to get some information. And we're, I know that's, that's another thing we're working on, Mr. Brady.
Well, it's out there.
Okay.
Mesa Now's out there. You can pull up all the information about the parks. You can see the map kind of like saw before. It has a city and it has all the different parks on there. And then you can hit one and it'll tell you what's in that park, the amenities in that park. We are going to keep working with Mark's app, as Mark indicated, you know, the next step would be that maybe you could then go and then make reservations or whatever. That, that has not happened. Right now, you can see, you can go, there's a, there's a, as soon as you hit Mesa Now, there's a, there's an icon for parks. You can get, see all the parks in Mesa. You can go and see what's in those parks. And then what we'll work on, and I think Mark mentioned that, is then being able to take, once you go there, if there's an opportunity to make reservations inside that park, then we'd make that link. But that's, we're, we're working on it. But the app and that, frankly, we're really focusing on the app. That seems to be kind of the trending of where people access information like this. And so, encourage people to use it because it's very, it's up and available today. And there's a lot of information, more than just parks, but a lot of other information out there on utilities, a lot of stuff on the utilities, and you can make payments from there, too. But this is intended to be kind of a performance-based, data-driven, is what we were showing today. But access for just information and interacting with the city, that certainly happens at the beginning of the front page of our website. And as you mentioned, mayor, in the things to do, after you hit things to do on that front page and you hit Parks and Recreation, you go to all this information. So, in just two clicks, you're on the Parks and Recreation website and then you can see online registration and sports programs. And it can get you a lot of the information from there.
Here's why I'm beating this dead horse. The last week or two, I've had two people say to me, hey, I really appreciate how active you are in being involved in the community and I see these things on social media and I go, wow, that is an amazing event. I wish I would have known about. Instead of looking at a picture of what the mayor did yesterday, I would have liked to have known the day before so that I could take my family and go to Dia de los Muertos, or one of the really cool things that, that we're doing. And I say, you know, that's, that's a good point. Maybe we ought to do, we'll try to be, my office will try to be more, do a better job of saying, here's what's, if there's something really cool happening this weekend, please join me at, you know, fill in the blank. And, and the Mesa Now app, it would probably be a great, and I see, we do have a calendar on the Mesa Now app, but it's pretty sterile. You know, it's just a text message about, here's when the next city council meeting is. But I just wonder if we ought to be a little more engaging in saying, if you're looking for something to do in Mesa, here's a ridiculously easy place to go to know that this weekend there's these festivals at this location and fun things to do.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just put a plug in, if, if folks follow us on Facebook, on City of Mesa on Facebook, we, weeks in advance, we are advertising all the different activities that are going on in the city of Mesa. So, if you get that question, make sure you ask them if they're following us on Facebook because we have videos, we have, there's a ton of information out there to engage the community and let them know about all the activities that are going on in the city of Mesa. We're really trying hard to push that information out way weeks in advance, as well as the week up.
Of course, you're right. And that, that's what my staff said to me when I asked them this question. They said, well, we just need to link more to the city of Mesa Facebook page because that is happening. So, so I'm, I'm learning how to be a better mayor and push that information out. But maybe that, it's good for all of us to remind each other that pushing out maybe the city of Mesa Facebook page is something we need to do a better job at. All right. Thank you very much. Council, any additional questions for these folks?
Thanks again. Next item on our agenda is to be appointment to the Human Relations Advisory Board. Any questions or is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, we had our District Six trunk-or-treat the, the other night and I think it was a huge success. We allowed the, this was the first year we really turned it over to the Desert Ridge High School Student Council and they took it and ran with it. And it was very well-attended. I don't know exactly how many people were there, but every year it seems to double. So, I'm guessing there was close to 3,000 people that showed up from the community. So, it was a great event. So, kudos to, to the Desert Ridge Student Council and to Commander Cutler and his, and his folks and to Alicia for all that she did to help make it such a success.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
We had a Halloween activity as well as Red Mountain, Mesa Community College campus. We had 2,500 people show up and it's a great event to bring community members together and to actually look at the college and the potential it has. So, so I want to thank Red Mountain Mesa Community College as well as Jessica Potter for coordinating that wonderful event.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
No, I didn't quite have 2,500 or 3,000 people there, but we had open office hours in my district. Yeah. So, we had a, pardon? Oh, yeah, yeah. We did. We had a good handful of people. We had more than that.
You were, you're my councilman. I was there.
The mayor was there. He's my constituent. I took care of him.
Right.
So, we had a, we had a really robust meeting. I appreciated that. And Katie, all she did and Jessica Potter, too, helped fill that in. So, we had a good time. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. Frank, Francisco?
Last Friday, we had a Webster Rec Center Halloween event carnival, which was very successful. And then a couple of things on the weekend, I don't know if you're going to mention, the Latino Town Hall, tremendous turnout from staff and, and other members of the community. And then Dia de los Muertos, which, you know, just keeps on getting better and better. So, really great events happening over the last week or so here in the city of Mesa.
Thank you. I appreciate particularly Dia de los Muertos was amazing. I really appreciate the chance to be there with Mr. Heredia and the consul general from Mexico. And I remember standing there with the consul general and she commented, what an amazing community you have. What an amazing event you have, what an amazing facility this is. And I had to agree with her. It really is, if you are, it's one of those hashtag why I live in Mesa things. If you're not going to Dia de los Muertos and you live in the city of Mesa, you're really missing out. That's a wonderful event. Also, Mr. Thompson, I went to a couple of events. Dignity, the Dignity Hospital opening a week, a couple of days ago was amazing, a beautiful first-class facility, a brand-new hospital in that very fast-growing part of town. And the Cadence Grand Opening, it's, that place is going to grow very, very quickly. Indicated 900 pre-sales already, so get ready. Eastmark was, was amazing in terms of the growth it brought to our city and that's about to happen all over again out of Cadence, so.
And the landings as well.
And the landings as well, yes. So, things, this place is on fire. Mesa is, Arizona is the center of the universe. I think I observed a couple of days ago. So, thanks for everybody who's making that happen. Other scheduling, yes, Mr. Luna?
Tomorrow evening at Jefferson Recreation Center, there'll be a carnival for the community by Jefferson Elementary School, so one through the 10. And then tomorrow's, I will be at Food Truck Friday over Los Indos, so combine, stop and visit. Eat some great food.
Great. I will be there. Anything else, council, on past events? Schedule of future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady, before you launch into that, Mr. Freeman made a great, was asking our city, our great city clerk, Ms. Mickelson, some questions about voting. And Mr. Freeman, please continue with that conversation so we can get that information out.
Well, that'll be real easy, mayor. I'll just direct my conversation to Deanne and ask her to explain early voting and how to turn in early ballots and?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. Voters can turn in their early ballots through Tuesday at 7:00 PM at, in the Mesa City Clerk's office. They can also early vote through 6:00 PM today. There will be early voting in Mesa City Hall. If voters have questions on their voting place, they can contact us. They can call 644-4868 and we can direct them to, to their voting center. But anybody in Maricopa County can drop their ballot off at any polling place. In Maricopa County, they don't have to drop their early ballot off in their own polling location.
That's useful information. So, if you still have one of those green envelopes in your home, don't panic. And you can take it to any polling place. It doesn't have to be your neighborhood polling place and you can walk to the, you don't have to stand in line. You just walk right in and drop it in the box.
Correct.
Okay. And that's, that's at the early polling places and then on Tuesday at any polling place.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, schedule of future meetings and information.
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a study session and council meeting on November 5th. We'll probably be starting a little bit early. We anticipate we'll be having an executive session prior to the council meeting. So, we may have an earlier start, possibly around 5:00 o'clock, so, on Monday. Thank you.
Okay. So, no executive session today?
Not today. Sorry. Yes, that we've, we're scheduling that to Monday.
Got it.[1739.61]